I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education Meeting. We appreciate that you're here. Please join us as we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Ross, would you call the roll, please?
Uh, Mr. LaGranne. Nope, not yet.
Not yet.
Uh, Reverend Matthias.
Here.
Pastor Moody, excuse, Mr. O'Connor, excuse, Dr. Randles.
Present.
Mr. Ross, present. Ms. Slade.
Present.
Uh, Dr. Baker.
Here.
Uh, President Faubus, excuse. Uh, well, we do have a coin with five for the time being, or is it six? We need six.
We've got five.
It is five, right?
Five is fine.
Five is seven.
Not five is okay?
Yeah, five's okay.
Okay. Uh, we have an agenda before us. May I have approval for the adoption of the agenda?
Some move?
I'll support.
Support.
Since we don't have our usual movers and supporters here.
We call the roll, Mr. Ross.
Reverend Matthias.
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Most of the agenda passes, five zero.
Thank you. And first item on the agenda is a celebration, Martin Luther King Junior Essay Contest.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Superintendent Neal, Mrs. Slade, and board members. It is my pre- pleasure tonight to present to you the winners of the Martin Luther King Junior Essay Contest, and this contest is sponsored on a yearly basis by Warner, Norcross, and Judd. And tonight I have Mr. Rodney Martin to present the awards. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Superintendent Neal, Ms. Slade, members of the board, thank you very much. This is, uh, the ninth time we've come before the school board with this, and it's very exciting for us as a law firm to be involved in this, uh, competition. Once again, every, uh, as we do every year, I want to thank Carmen Fernandez of the Southwest Academia, or Community Center, uh, who, Community Campus, who helps us every year administer this program. We couldn't get this done without her assistance. Uh, we're happy, uh, to once again say we had very good turnout for the contest. We had nearly three hundred essays, uh, this year, uh, each one addressing one of two writing prompts that we provided to the children. More than forty attorneys, uh, and staff members from Warner, Norcross, and Judd and our seven offices all around the state participated in reading all those essays, and then they moved on to a final committee of five that, uh, had to select the winners, which, I will tell you, proved to be very difficult this year, uh, because the quality of the essays were incredible, and I really mean that. Uh, I've been reading these for nine years, and of the twenty-three students who we'll be honoring this evening, uh, I would defy you to find a grammatical slip or a really awful word choice or anything like that. It was incredible. Uh, and so, I, I, I'm excited to be here tonight, and I appreciate your taking the time, uh, to recognize the, uh, the accomplishment of these students. Uh, what I'm going to do tonight is to, uh, present, uh, the awards to the three top winners and also to the honorable mention, uh, students who received honorable mention. The three winners will receive, um, a certificate of deposit, uh, that we hope they will save and invest for their college education down the road, uh, and then a gift card from the Schuler Bookstore along with a certificate of participation. All of the honorable mention students also receive a certificate of participation and a gift, a gift certificate, uh, at Schuler Books. Uh, so let me, um, introduce, um, the three students who are the winners. I'll bring them up one at a time and give them the opportunity to read their essays to you. Uh, the first student, the second runner-up is Maya Barbie of the Center of Economicology.
Making the World a Better Place. Have you ever thought of all the problems in this world? For example, so many people without homes, so many people without jobs, kids are animals without homes, world hunger, global warming, pollution, kids without an education, and much more. There's always going to be a problem. Nothing is ever going to be perfect. That's just the way life goes. If everyone contributes in some way, the world can become a better place for the children of the world to come. I personally do many little things to make the world a better place. I volunteered in a neighborhood for a program that gives kids free books. That means I help some kids learn new things. I also convinced my family to get a dog. The dog we found is from a rescue organization. I happily saved a dog from being sent to a medical research facility where she could have gotten seriously hurt or killed. I also support the Down Syndrome Association of West Michigan by going to the Body Walk and their annual Christmas celebration, which, which supports kids with Down Syndrome, like my sister. I also go to the store the weekend before Thanksgiving with my family. We get two Thanksgiving meals for two families in need. Also, my grandma lives in a retirement home, so I do some things to help out there, too. Many, many senior citizens get lonely, so even if I just talk to them, that makes them happy. I pass out newsletters, recycle papers, and many other different things. I want to encourage people to make a difference by doing little things one step at a time. I think Dr. King would say, "Everyone can make a difference no matter who you are, even if you give something you can't see, like honesty or kindness. Even if you don't have anything, you can give something." Dr. King encouraged a lot of people and made a difference. I want to be like him, and I hope everyone else does, too. I can't make anybody do anything, so all I can do is encourage. So many people don't realize that they can help the world by doing little things. Dr. King was once a kid. Everyone starts small. That's how people grow. I can give my kindness, my heart, and everything else to try to get people to give back. Everyone can make a difference or help in some way. If everyone works together, we can make the world a better place for now and for the youth to come.
You can already see why it was so hard.
We can see that.
First runner-up is Sophia Crumbacterian, also from the Center for Economicology. Sophia?
Changing the World. Martin Luther King Junior was a courageous man with a big heart. He started out with doing little things that grew and grew until he changed the world. I love animals, and I want to change the world for, for them. So if he could do it, so can I. Animal cruelty is a horrible subject. Sadly enough, some people choose to be mean to innocent animals. My three cats were all strays, which means that they were from the streets and from filthy shelters. One of them was abused by his past owner before he was kicked to the curb and then put in a cage. Adopting shelter cats and helping strays are two ways to make the world a better place. When I'm old, old enough, I hope to volunteer at my local animal shelter to help change the lives of animals in need. Litter is something else that I fight against. All this trash is damaging our planet, and we only get one to share with all other living things. I get angry when I see litter at my local park because wildlife could get hurt and their drinking water could get filled with garbage. Every Earth Day, my family and I go to the park and pick up almost all the trash we see in hope of saving, uh, animals. If I act like it's Earth Day every day, I can make a massive difference in the lives of squirrels, deer, ducks, and many other animals that I'd never even see. Finally, people are animals, too, and we can help each other in many ways. I, for example, give my friends and family nice compliments and warm smile to make them feel better when they're feeling down. I visit my elderly neighbor because I know that my visits cheer her up. Everyone should be warm and fed, and no one should be without friends. Loneliness is like an illness. Laughter is the best medicine, so I pass it around for everyone to share. All of these things could make a huge difference to the, to a lot of animals, big and small. They could even change the world. All of these subjects I wrote about have two things in common, kindness and hope. I will help as much as I can, but I hope that many will join me, just like they joined Dr. King, who spoke to smaller crowds before he spoke to all of the citizens, citizens of the world. Right now, I'm just an eleven-year-old kid, but I'm already a hero to my three cats. When I grow up, there will be no limit to the animals I can help. That's my dream.
And now I'm very proud to introduce the grand prize winner, who has read her essay twice now during Martin Luther King Day celebrations at Grand Rapids Community College, Sophie Christine Blomeling of Riverside Middle School.
Dr. Martin Luther King, Izzy, and me. Dr. Martin Luther King Junior is one of America's heroes. He took the time and patience to try and fight calmly and nonviolently to win some of the true freedom of, of the United States of America. But anyone can be a true hero, not by a cape or tights and underwear, but having a kind heart, patience, and a willingness to put anyone else in front of them. He inspired me to think of other people first and put their needs before mine, but I'm not waiting about me. I'm waiting about a true friend who saved me, and her name is Izzy. When I was younger, I attracted bullies like a magnet. I was so broken. I was super shy, and I always wore a scarf, scarf to hide myself. On one particular occasion, I decided not to. That was the day I made a new friend. It was at the Boys and Girls Club. I sat alone, afraid that if I left my spot, I'd be bullied again. For some reason, I got up and drew a picture on the chalkboard wall and sat back down. After about an hour, I heard someone yell, saying, "Who drew that picture?" I went up to the girl and stammered, "I, I, I did. I'm so sorry." Before I could finish, she interrupted me. She hugged me tightly and said, "It's okay. I like it." I was so shocked. It felt so nice to feel, feel a friendly touch from somebody else. Izzy, Isabella, was like a true heroine. She saved my life. Before she came along, I used to feel depressed and kind of hopeless. She could relate to my feelings because she experienced pain from being bullied herself. Even so, she took the time to help me gain some self-confidence. If it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be such a good artist, singer, or have so many friends. She put my needs in front of her own, just like Dr. King would have. She put color back into my life. Never I tried to give her something in return for her kindness, she says, "You don't need to give me anything. Just stay the way you are and be my good friend." Izzy has characteristics of a true personal hero, just like Dr. King did. America is still not entirely fair, and we may have a little too much freedom with things like bullying, stealing, kidnapping, murder, et cetera. But thank goodness, Dr. King did make a big hole in some of it. Some of Dr. King's dreams have been fulfilled today. Dr. King, a man who started a fight for freedom without using violence, would have been proud to see that America is a bit freer than it was before he started the social revolution. No one's life is insignificant. Saving anyone from life or death is a huge accomplishment. Like I said before, a hero doesn't have to have a cape and superpowers, or even save the world from an evil villain. Being a hero takes bravery, love, patience, and a willingness to put yourself out there no matter who or what needs you. And that's what Dr. King and Izzy have in common. They are heroes, and they are my role models. I think Dr. King would agree with me. Izzy is a true friend.
Wow. Very impressive.
Yeah, how about that?
That was a hard decision to make.
I, I think one of the real successes in the competition, uh, in the last few years is that the students, the teachers are helping the students write personal stories. We used to give book reports on Dr. King, but now the students are taking Dr. King's life and applying it, and, and they're telling us stories about themselves, and that's really what made it so difficult, uh, to judge the essays this year. You read all these wonderful stories that come from the heart, so, um, I'm very pleased now to, uh, go through the, the twenty students who received honorable mention. They won't all be here this evening, but we'll read all their names into the record. Uh, first is Maria Barrera for the Center for Economicology. Vincent Bellinger, Center for Economicology. Jacob Land, Center for Economicology. Isaiah Weems, Gerald Ford Academic Center. Isabella Van Zorin, Grand Rapids Montessori. Fatima Abadi, Riverside Middle School. Isaac Dubink, Riverside Middle School. Janon Joyce Weathers, Riverside Middle School. Dayton Lent, Riverside Middle School. Marianne Mahdi, Riverside Middle School. Marian, pardon me. Francisco McKnight, Junior, Riverside Middle School. Demarian Milton, Riverside Middle School. Kylie Oheda, Riverside Middle School. Kaylee. Zaraya Pearson, Riverside Middle School. Jeremiah Rodriguez, Riverside Middle School. I nailed that one. Dakota Smith, Riverside Middle School. Isaiah Swansea, Swansea, Riverside Middle School. Deanna Juarez, Southwest Community Campus. Raquel Ruffares, Southwest Community Campus. Rosio Tapia, Southwest Community Campus. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. I am going to take all the kids out and get their pictures taken.
Very good. Before you go, are any of their teachers here that did such great work, would you please stand so we can? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Schools are doing well. It's great.
They're gonna miss the rest of the meeting.
I don't know why they're leaving. It would be so much more interesting if they stayed. Isn't that wonderful? Yeah, I'll give them just a second to move. Okay. That was wonderful. Truly wonderful. Okay, we have reports from our student representatives, and we have a new representative today, so I'm going to ask him to introduce, or, Dr. Baker, you want to introduce him?
This is Angel Barreto Cruz, uh, from Union High School, and I, I know Angel from, uh, Summer Bridge Program that GRPS partnered with Ferris State University last summer, and, uh, great example and, uh, representative of Union High School. You want to introduce anything else?
Uh, no, I pretty much had everything.
They'll be more talkative in the future, so.
And, Mr. Jones, we're happy to see you back. Do you have a report today?
Um, yes, um, a lot of glows for, uh, Innovations Central, Innovations Central. Our staff is doing mighty well. Our security guards are making relationships with, um, with each other, with the students as well. Basically, they, um, more lenient, they, like, they understand, like, if it's your one time, they're like, "Okay," would be more lenient, but if you, it's constantly happening, they basically break down and finally, um, be basically pushing their buddy. And then, uh, the next time, people are usually like, "Okay, we, I get it. I get, we, we're, I understand it. We'll, um, I mean, let's, okay, the people, our students will be like, "Okay, I get it. Next time, I'll fix myself. I won't do it again." And so, that's going well. Uh, the administration, they're doing good. Um, they volunteer, they volunteering their time, um, such as Mr. McGee, he volunteer, he volunteers himself most of the time, he, they, uh, most of the, um, not most, all of the, um, administration there, um, basically help the students, and they're, they're in a struggle situation, they basically calmed them down instead of basically saying, "No, you're wrong. The teacher's always right, this and that." Um, everything's going good. Um, I'm working with Mr., Mr. G over there, Mr., we are, uh, he happens, he talked to his, uh, people for the hip-hop, um, the hip-hop, um, studio thing. He, uh, we're basically, we're working together and they said, um, building, helping to get off the ground. And then also, um, the suggestion box is going good. Uh, we have it in progress right now.
Very good. Great. And we'll hear from you perhaps the next time.
He's, he's making big changes.
Yeah.
He's just, he's only there a few weeks, too, so you see already.
Well, we certainly are happy to have both of you here, so thank you very much. Feel free to give a report and let us know what's happening.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Don't have any public comments?
No cards that I see, no, ma'am.
Oh, per agenda items, there's one. I'm sorry.
Well, there's one, okay.
I don't, I don't know if it's agenda or non-agenda, we were just shuffling it.
Non-agenda?
Just making sure.
Thank you. Okay, reports. Secretary's report.
Uh, we did have a couple of things regarding, um, some community activities supported by, uh, our high school athletic teams. Um, at Union High School, on February seventh, against Kennewell Hills, they'll be holding an Autism Awareness Night. Um, there'll be a halftime shootout, uh, drawing for prizes. Proceeds from the game will go to the autism support of Kent County. Admission is five dollars, or free with the purchase of an Autism Awareness T-shirt for ten dollars. The varsity girl game starts at six, the boys' game starts at seven thirty, and again, that's at Union High School on February seventh. Five dollars for admission, ten dollars for a T-shirt. Again, this is to support autism, um, support of Kent County, and, um, again, February seventh. Then Ottawa Hills, uh, against the game against Wayland, also on February seventh, uh, be raising money for the American Heart Association. Same situation, admission is five dollars, or it's included with the purchase of a red-out T-shirt for ten dollars. Um, the girls' game starts at six and the varsity game at seven thirty. So again, two options on February seventh to support, um, our athletics and their community, uh, work, one at Union for Autism and one at Ottawa, um, for the American Heart Association. That is all I have.
Thank you.
Just one feminist wedge in there, I'm sorry. Uh, the women's team and then the varsity team, aren't they both varsity?
Varsity girls and varsity boys.
Oh, okay. I only heard women's team, and then I heard varsity team as if.
Oh, I may have slipped.
Paying attention.
A little slight.
Well, maybe there's a masculist point there, too, then, because I don't know why we have women and boys.
Well, there you go.
Well, I think he said.
You need to correct that.
She's fine demeaning women, but, I mean, she's fine demeaning men, but women, women you respect.
He just said, he only said varsity, and then the assumption is, of course, it's men's or boys'.
Very good, Mr. LaGranne.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping me on.
Superintendent's report.
Yes, I have, uh, two things I'd like to share. Um, I'm gonna ask my friends to come down from the, uh, and this is correct. So it is the Women's Council of Realtors of Western Michigan to come forward. I have the opportunity to speak to this group. Come on down. Have a seat. Had an opportunity to speak some time ago, about a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago even, uh, for the first time, to talk about Grand Rapids Public Schools and all of the wonderful things that we were doing here in, in the district. And then they asked me to come back and speak again, um, and so I had an opportunity to share even more. And because of that, we were given a gift. Um, but I'm gonna ask that each one introduce themselves and just talk a little bit about what you do.
My name is Lola Aldu, and I was a two thousand and thirteen president of Women's Council of Realtors. Women's Council of Realtors is the nation's leading organization for real estate professionals who are mostly women, but we probably about thirty percent of our membership is also men, and it is an organization that stresses professionalism and education. So we were very pleased to have the opportunity to support the Grand Rapids school system.
Wonderful. Katie, any of you want to share?
I'm Melanie Abraham, and I'm the current two thousand and fourteen president, and this year, I'm focusing on adding value, and how do we add value to our members but educating, education? And with that, uh, this ties into educating them about what's happening and, and improving in our education system, so, uh, we're really pleased to have you. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Shelley Frody, um, and I am the president-elect, so I'm, uh, just learning lots from these girls and, uh, how I can help support the schools as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'm Katie Young. I was the two thousand thirteen and now the two thousand fourteen Events and Education Chairperson for the Western Michigan Chapter of the Women's Council of Realtors, and I, um, am in charge of implementing and planning the education, um, events and luncheons for our chapter, to bring in speakers, to share their points of view, and educate us on the community and, um, the area in which we live and, and that all of our affiliates and realtors in the industry are trying to sell. So again, thank you very much.
So with this group, I, I, I'm not real sure of the process, but I, I guess you had several speakers come in, um, throughout the year, and there was a contest, and we, Grand Rapids Public Schools, we won, and so they presented a check, and the check is...
Can they see that?
A check for fifteen hundred dollars to the Grand Rapids Public Schools in December. Thank you, Ms. Jules. We should get this for the TV, so we do want to have this. But I did get a real check. My cabinet and I decided to take the, um, dollars and to buy winter coats for children in the district, and so we were able to purchase about fifty coats. We asked each principal to give us the name of one child that, um, they felt would use the coat, or could use the coat, and went to the store, and we were able to purchase, uh, like I said, about fifty. Actually, there's fifty-one, because we still have one coat upstairs for a high schooler if, if someone needs a coat. But we purchased coats with it, and I just thought it was a great time to share, and then I was really pleased that we actually won, for presenting, um, to talk about Grand Rapids Public Schools. So I thank you for opening your organization to us and to sharing, and I also wanted to let you know that the money went to such a great use, because we were able to purchase, uh, coats. The day before Christmas break, we delivered coats to children in the entire district, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And the next report that I have is, uh, to share about parent... And the next report that I have is to share about parent university. We have started our new session, and it was just, it was great. Several of us had an opportunity to go to one of the sessions that was put on by the PBIS team. And what a great opportunity to share. I do want to encourage not only parents in the community to attend the classes that we offer, but employees. This particular event was around parenting, and I'm a grandmother and thought I did really well as a parent and even better as a grandparent. But I was amazed at the things that I learned, and so were some of the other folks there. So I would like to encourage people to join us and attend some of the classes. That is it?
Thank you very much. We have an action item and a donation. Are you presenting information on that?
I don't know, but I can probably present. All right. Let's see, I don't see anyone here from the business office. Rhonda is here. Rhonda, you're in the wrong seat. Please come forward.
I'm looking over here.
Right, I'm looking over here.
So we have one donation due to the snow day last. It was going to go through finance last Monday and due to the snow day and finance was canceled. But it is from Wolverine Worldwide, and the donation was for boots and coats and warm weather gear for the kids that are working out with the Academy of Design and Construction. So actually, they're being put to good use already, so. It's been really cold. That is our donation.
And we saw that in the press and on the news. So that was a wonderful donation. We need to approve that?
Yes.
You should approve that. I have a motion to approve. Some more?
Support. Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Reverend Matthias.
Support.
Pastor Moody, excuse, and Mr. O'Connor, excuse. Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Fogg, excuse. The donation passed at 6-0.
Thank you very much. We have a consent agenda. Is there anybody who want to remove anything from that agenda before we go forward? And I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some more?
Ms. Legrand?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias?
Yes.
Pastor Moody, excuse. Mr. O'Connor, excuse. Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Fogg, excuse. Consent agenda passed at 6-0.
Thank you. Appears that there are no discussion items, public comments. We have one card from Mr. Helder, or do we have more?
Just one from the illustrious Mr. Paul Helder.
Mr. Paul Helder.
Illustrious Mr. Paul Helder.
It's too bad the crowd left. Looks great. Wow, you look great. You look great.
You looked great before too, by the way.
Before what? Did you get his haircut?
Here, it is weird, it's fuller.
It's probably because after the fire, I finally got my stuff properly cleaned.
Would you like a reminder or you're good to go?
I'm good to go, thanks. Okay, good evening, everybody. It's been a while. I admitted a minute ago. I haven't been around a whole lot because, as some of you know, we had a house fire. So, you know, I've been in Kentwood in a hotel with my wife and two daughters and a dog and a cat for the last month plus. So, you know, everyone's still alive and, you know, it's, we're good. And they haven't killed me yet, living in a hotel with me, so we're good to go. Tonight, I wanted to just ask a couple of questions about the nepotism policy. And more to the point, take a couple minutes of TV time to remind everybody watching at home who may be a GRPS employee that February 14th is the deadline to make sure that you've completed that work and that you've submitted your information. I don't want anyone to run into a problem with that. And while I can email my members, I can't email anybody else. So I'm hoping that people will take that seriously and get that in. One of the things that I noted as I clicked the link that I saw is that it requires you to insert your GRPS credentials. And while this makes a good deal of sense, I am not on the system for GRPS and don't have InfoHost. And I'm wondering, can we either put that in some other format, or can someone let me borrow their computer? Something so I can fill that out as well. My, a number of my members have asked, and so I'm asking you. When I looked at the agenda tonight, I noticed that there were some, again, some hirings and some movings, and, you know, we always have a number of personnel transactions that take place. Nowhere was it annotated with the hirings whether or not these individuals had any relation in GRPS. I don't know if that was the intent of the policy or whether that's just not being done yet because we're not to February 14 or what. Presumably, if that's not the intent, that's okay. But, you know, I would just remind the board to make sure that they are seeing that information before approving or not approving, you know, their hirings. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you very much.
Sure thing. Less than three minutes. How you like that?
Has to be hard to be in a, must be hard to be in a hotel for a month, particularly with a cat.
Well, it's the dog. The dog is the problem.
Probably not as hard as being in a hospital for a few weeks, Maureen. Probably not as hard as being in a hospital for a few weeks.
I was gonna say, it's probably harder to be in a hotel room with me for a month, but.
Thank you very much. Okay, superintendent's comments.
No comment.
No comment from you. Board members? Dr. Baker?
I, as I sat here, realized that we should proceed with scheduling our committee meetings. And so I think that, I'll make the announcement now. I plan to, for Reverend Matthias, Ms. Slade, and also Pastor Moody, who is also on the Academic Achievement Committee, correct? Am I correct in everybody's, okay? That we'll go ahead, and I'll speak with Ms. Evans after the meeting, and we'll plan if it's possible to go ahead with our second Tuesday. And I realize the math because that will be next Tuesday. So anyway, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
We'll continue Tuesday.
We just got to continue Tuesdays at 4:00. So I think that that works better with this, with this schedule. If anybody has any objections to that, I guess we should clear that up as soon as the meeting's over, so.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
No comment.
I just wanted to clarify. I don't think the committee assignments have been posted, have they? Did anyone else receive any?
Yeah, they were emailed out.
Emailed out? Okay. Okay, stay warm. No comments.
Ms. Legrand?
First, and these are both matters of relative trivia, but the meeting's been short, so. The first is that I certainly didn't mean to cast aspersions on Dr. Randalls feminism. And I realized after I was, after I made my comments that she's probably well aware of the scientific studies which indicate that women develop their brains a lot earlier than men do. And men clearly don't become grown-ups until they're at least 24. I suspect it's more like 45.
Did we need research? I never want to minimize a boy or a young man's development, so I never.
Well, that being said, this is something that, you know, I mean, as we're in the education business, and this is, you know, on the one hand, you've got to be careful not to infantilize. On the other hand, presuming that people have full decision-making capacity when they flat-out don't and when their brains aren't developed fully.
I have my 16-year-old son and these two young men.
And they're doing just fine.
Well, I think that's probably a mistake. I think you've got to cut the men some slack because our brains are not as developed.
Second item.
The second, the second item is, and I don't know if we have to, you know, to have our people in Washington lobby President Obama or something, but someday, I would like the public comment thing at the end to say, "Agenda or non-agenda items." I don't want to only talk about non-agenda items. And if anybody walked in off the street and saw that, they would presume that they weren't allowed to talk about agenda items. And I would like the public to be able to comment about what we talk about. I don't know how to get that changed. I've been on the board for a year now, and I've been asking for it. It hasn't, we got the water off the table.
The only thing we do need to make sure of is that we have the agenda items first. That we do want those because that may impact what we decide.
But, but, I want to have feedback afterwards. If people thinks, think we made a bad decision, I'd like to hear about it. So, so I would.
We'll talk to our president.
Yeah, I would, that's my New Year's wish, if it's not my New Year's resolution. So yeah, enough said. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Reverend Matthias?
I have no comments.
Thank you. I have none either after that. Hearing no more, we are adjourned.
Need to use a gavel.
I like that.
Haven't done this since college.